Buenos dias, Hafa Day. Gracias a todos por estar aquí hoy. El comité de educación, autodeterminación, preservación histórica, infraestructura, seguridad fronteriza, asuntos extranjeros y marítima transporte ahora se reunirá en esta audiencia pública. Gracias. Hoy es jueves 16 de junio de 2022 y actualmente son las 3:07 de la tarde. Para recordar y en concordancia con la ley del gobierno abierto, se envían notificaciones por correo electrónico a todos los senadores, interesados y al periódico Guam Daily Post el jueves 9 de junio de 2022, y la segunda noticia el martes 14 de junio de 2022. La noticia de esta audiencia es también disponible en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam. Miembros de mi equipo hoy tenemos a senador Joanne Brown y senador Telo Tai De Gueye. Gracias, senadores, por estar aquí hoy. Hoy en nuestra agenda tenemos el artículo 114-36-COR, que es un acto para amender la sección 73.102, 73.107, 73.109, 73.141 y 73.142 del capítulo 73, título 5, codificación Guam anotada, relativo a los poderes de un oficial de customs, definición guardia en barcos, lugar de inspección y liberación de cargos encerrados en los ports de entrada de Guam y para la actualización de las penalties en violación de estos requisitos legislativos. El próximo artículo que tenemos es el 289-36-LS, que es un acto para agregar una nueva sección 73.157 al artículo 1 del capítulo 73, título 5, codificación Guam anotada, relativo a autorizar el agente de quarantía de customs la autorización reorganizacional para el propósito de proporcionar asistencia para mejor proteger nuestro país y será conocido como el Acto de Reorganización de Customs de 2022. Y el próximo artículo será el artículo 92-36-LS, que es un acto para amender la sección 73.203, 73.204 y la sección 73.205 del artículo 2, capítulo 73, título 5, codificación Guam anotada, relativo a cargos por servicios de cargadores de oficinas de quarantía de customs y para establecer más un pago de procesamiento administrativo de servicios de cargadores de customs. Entiendo que en los últimos minutos ha habido información que ha sido presentada a nuestro comité acerca de dos de nuestros artículos. Así que el primer artículo que voy a empezar es el artículo 292-36-LS. El artículo 292-36-LS es un acto para amender la sección 73.203, 73.204 y 73.205 del artículo 2, capítulo 73, título 5, codificación Guam anotada, relativo a cargos por servicios de cargadores de customs y oficinas de quarantía y para establecer más un pago de procesamiento administrativo de servicios de cargadores de customs. La CQA implementó el programa de servicio de oficinas de customs para proporcionar servicios a los interesados en la entrega y cargos de customs de Guam para que obtuvieran claridad de los bienes que llegan por barcos y cargos en su mayor conveniencia, incluyendo cualquier día de la semana, viernes, vacaciones o entre las horas de las 5:00 p.m. y las 6:00 p.m. a costos adicionales. Con la escasez actual de oficinas de customs y las restricciones encontradas en los estatutos de la ODS, la CQA encuentra difícil formar y asignar oficinas que han alcanzado su límite de carga de la ODS, lo que impide que los oficinas de customs en el programa de la ODS no excedan un costo máximo de $275 por oficino por día. Oficinas que han alcanzado su límite son prohibidas de aceptar asignaciones adicionales y en cambio, los oficinas que realizan operaciones regulares deben estar en la tarea de la ODS. Debido al límite de carga de la ODS, la CQA también experimenta impactos financieros adversos, mandatos sin financiamiento y restricciones operativas. Este artículo busca rectificar el problema eliminando el límite de carga de la ODS para que el programa de la ODS permanezca beneficiosa para los interesados en la entrega y claridad de cargos, de los oficinas de customs y del gobierno. Y me gustaría leer para el registro aquellos presentes que testifican por el artículo 292-36-LS, que es el coronel Phil Tyron y el director Ike Paredo y el señor John Ray Mendiola. Ahí está usted. Bien, director, abriré el floor para un testimonio o tal vez una presentación que usted tenga. Y si hay alguien más que quisiera hablar, que haya firmado para dar testimonio al artículo 2292-36-LS, voy a permitir el tiempo para los miembros de su panel. Director.
Buenas tardes, senador y miembros de este comité. Mi nombre es Ike Paredo y soy el director del Agente de Customs y Quarantía. Conmigo hoy tengo al coronel Phil Tyron a mi derecha y también tengo al oficial de customs 3 John Rick Mendiola conmigo hoy. Para comenzar, el programa de servicio de oficinas de customs ha estado en marcha apoyando las solicitudes especiales para las necesidades de la importación de cargos y de la industria de la entrega durante las últimas dos décadas. El programa fue aprobado como ley pública en la ley 25.138 el 22 de mayo de 2000. El programa proporciona la oportunidad para las empresas de cargos y de la entrega de solicitar claridades de servicio en un momento que es ventajoso y conveniente para el uso de este programa. Este programa es completamente electivo y no compulso. El programa se intende a ser autosustentable, sin costos para el gobierno de Guam. Aumentaron los salarios de los oficinas y redujo el cargo de pago del gobierno con costos no intencionados contrarios al diseño original del programa. El gobierno incrementó el coste de overtime de las solicitudes de la ODS que excede el límite de carga de $275. Durante los casos en que el límite de carga de $275 fue alcanzado, los oficinas fueron requeridos para completar el trabajo para la claridad pero a la expansión del gobierno utilizando el tiempo del gobierno. La ley pública 36.54, año fiscal 2020, Acto de Búझo de Búझo aclaró que los oficinas de customs eran responsables de pagar el cargo de pago, pero este derecho nunca se aplicó a las cargas de la ODS, recaudado por los oficinas de customs que realizaban la ODS. El departamento de administración continuó a recibir compensación por el pago de procesamiento administrativo de la ODS, pero esto no aborda los costos asociados con la asignación de la agencia de customs de cargo 3 que solo estaba recogiendo, reconciliando y procesando acciones para facilitar el programa. Los costos continúan siendo ignorados por la agencia debido a actividades de supervisión necesarias para administrar este programa. Los de customs no solicitan reembolso por los costos de supervisión y gestión administrativa porque esto es parte de los deberes de gestión. El artículo 292 solicita restaurar el no costo del gobierno y los propios recursos críticos de los programas de ODS eliminando el límite de carga de la ODS de $275, incluyendo el pago de riesgo como parte del recaudado del cargo. Iniciando un pago de procesamiento administrativo se deberá recoger y depositar en el fondo revuelto de la ODS y autorizando al director del departamento de administración a usar todos los medios legales necesarios para recoger todas las balances y intereses que son más de doce meses pasado para la fecha de los servicios de inspección que se proveen. Le pido su apoyo y voto para que este aprobado el artículo 292-36. Gracias de nuevo por su tiempo, por esta oportunidad de hablar en favor del artículo 292-36. A esta hora, concluyo mi testimonio, cuya pregunta pueda ser de la comité.
Gracias, director. A esta hora, lo abriré. Si hay preguntas de mis colegas hacia usted, comenzaremos con el senador Brown. Senador Brown, ¿tiene alguna pregunta o comentarios sobre este artículo?
Sí, si puedo pedir al director aclarar este proceso. Estás hablando de traer a tus oficinas para acomodar cualquier solicitud adicional de inspección o claridad de su cargo fuera de sus horarios de oficina diarios que tienen.
Sí, senador. Así que lo que pasa aquí es que operamos de 8 a 5 en el puerto, incluyendo el cargo. Y así, cualquier cosa después de las cinco de la noche, un importador o consignero puede solicitar servicios. Si tienen cargos que entran a las diez de la noche, entonces podemos hacer una relación basada en este particular ley y permitirle a los oficinas eliminar ciertos cargos. Igualmente, después de medianoche, si desean que sus cargos lleguen a las tres de la mañana, entonces tenemos que proporcionar sus servicios porque son ellos los que van a pagar sus servicios.
Y así, los servicios que están pagando, estás diciendo, la ley actual requiere un límite de $275.
Un día, sí.
Y cuántos, cuáles oficinas tienes haciendo estas inspecciones? Porque he oído en el pasado, yo estaba en el puerto durante seis años, a veces son los oficinas senior que vienen a realizar esta tarea y las reclamaciones de los oficinas de menor rango dicen que nunca se les da realmente el tiempo de la hora o la oportunidad de hacer este tipo de trabajo porque los oficinas senior están arriba de sus salarios más altos haciendo este tipo de inspecciones. Entonces, ¿cuál es el problema aquí? Es seguro que había una razón por la que se estableció el límite. No creo que quisiéramos llegar a ese punto donde se abusa, ¿verdad? Y simplemente se convierte en una oportunidad de lucro para los oficinas. Entonces, ¿cuál es la justificación y si hubiera algún límite puesto en él?
Hay una política en marcha donde los oficinas que son capaces de trabajar este programa de ODS, tienen una lista que tienen que usar y los oficinas son llamados basados en los términos de esta lista en particular. Y así, independientemente de si eres un oficial senior o un oficial junior, si tu nombre aparece, entonces ese es el tiempo.
¿Hay alguna diferencia en el precio por hora? ¿Es el mismo por hora?
Sí, la tarifa diaria es diferente.
¿Es el mismo, es el mismo precio pagado al cliente? Si te estoy llamando a las tres de la mañana para inspeccionar mi cargo, ¿cuánto voy a pagar dependiendo de quién aparezca? ¿Tengo una tarifa fija? ¿Cuál sería esa tarifa? ¿Cuál me cobrarías?
La forma en que la ley se lee es que es tres veces el pago del oficial. Así que si estoy ganando $40 por hora y estoy llamado a venir a las tres de la mañana, entonces mi primera hora será 40 x 3 es 120.
¿Entonces quieres decir que esa cifra puede cambiar dependiendo de la tarifa diaria del oficial que aparece?
Sí, todo depende del oficial porque cada oficial tiene un pago diferente.
¿Por qué no es una tarifa estándar? Y si quieren cubrirlo, lo cubren. Si no lo hacen, no lo hacen. Porque, de nuevo, eso ha sido la reclamación en el pasado y ha sucedido. Has tenido oficinas senior que están, ya sabes, están arriba en el pago y la senioridad y el rango y son los tipos que aparecen a las tres de la mañana. Y yo duermo que es porque los más jóvenes son, ya sabes, simplemente no pueden subir para hacer el trabajo.
La política no discrimina contra los oficinas, senador. Por eso tenemos una lista y tienen que seguir esa lista. Así que si tu nombre aparece y no quieres trabajar a las tres de la mañana, entonces simplemente declinas la solicitud y el siguiente oficial vendrá.
Pero no hay consistencia en el pago, es mi preocupación. No hay consistencia en el pago. Si obtengo un oficial de rango senior a las tres de la mañana, entonces yo, como cliente, voy a estar pagando más versus un oficial junior que entra a las tres de la mañana. ¿Es eso lo que me estás diciendo?
Sí.
Y entonces, ¿por qué no tienes a tus tipos trabajando en turnos? Porque, ya sabes, el mundo, y seguramente el cargo no trabaja de 8 a 5. Sabes, el puerto incluso tiene turnos. Tienen a su personal que entra en las noches y realiza funciones y descarga barcos. No tengo horas extra especiales para los empleados que están siendo cargados de manera diferente y descargando un contenedor a las tres de la mañana. ¿Por qué es así para los de customs? ¿No trabajan en turnos para inspeccionar?
Trabajamos en turnos en el aeropuerto. El aeropuerto es un turno de 24 horas. Cargo en el puerto y en el aeropuerto no son 24 horas porque todo depende si el cargo está disponible. Quiero decir, ¿por qué voy a poner un turno en un día en particular cuando no hay cargo para ser liberado? Esa es la razón por la que esto.
Bueno, pero sabemos.
Y esto no es obligatorio, es voluntario. Si quieres tu cargo a las tres de la mañana, entonces, por supuesto, tenemos que ir y encontrar a alguien.
Señor, solo quiero asegurarme de que esto es justo y igualitario para los clientes porque también, por favor, sabemos que los de customs en el pasado no han tenido manos limpias. Sabemos eso como un hecho.
I'm paying, that's why I'm asking. Do we simply standardize, as we do for other government services, a standard fee that's not based upon who's showing up to do the inspection? Then it's fair and it's clear. There's no incentive for anybody else to take advantage of it if it's the same rate for everybody, if it's an after hour. Because, trust me, it doesn't exist for any other employee there that shows up to do the work, even if it's moving a container. There's no separate fee because, oh, I have the supervisor moving the container. And I'll be curious to check, what do they do in other jurisdictions? Same thing, there's separate special pay depending on who shows up. If it's a senior officer, then I'm going to pay more. If it's a junior officer, I'm going to pay less. So I'm bringing that up because I just don't know if that's how we should be going charging with regards to the specific issue. Other than that, with regards to, do you have this available for both the airport and the port, or is this just at the port? You were saying you don't have as much cargo coming in at the evening up at the airport.
It's both the terminal cargo and the port. This applies to terminal cargo and the port.
And on a weekly basis, how many requests would you get like this?
It all depends on the flight.
On average?
For example, the airport.
On average, you keep statistics on what your weekly or monthly inspection schedule is after hours that's needed for clearance?
I don't have an exact number, but there's quite a few of requests, especially up at cargo.
How much? A general number?
You have a number for how much officers, how many officers a day? Maybe an average of eight?
Probably fifteen. Up at the airport, probably fifteen requests.
Okay, on a month, just on average. Again, I understand it can fluctuate. How about for the port on average?
It all depends on the port. Again, if a vessel comes in, of course, again, if a vessel comes in at two o'clock in the morning, the agents will request for the officers to be there to clear that vessel. And then that's the vessel. But then, once cargoes are cleared at the port, if there's a need for inspection and the consignee requests, let's say on a Sunday, that they need you to clear their cargo, then we do have officers that also are assigned to clear containers.
And how about with regards to cargo that's taken off-site to other locations, which has been the case where inspections are done off-site? They're not done at the port. Maybe it's done at the location for, I'm bringing in, you know?
Yes, we do have.
Fruits and vegetables. Does that also count if they, if you're, they're taking the container off-site before it's open and cleared by customs? You do have situations like that, where the containers are taken off the port without inspection?
Yes, we schedule container inspection upon request, and the officers are made available to provide their services if the consignee requests.
Can you provide us at least for this year, I'm going to request, if we could get a copy at least of the last six months of your listing of your roster of who performs these inspections and when they were performed. I assume you keep records of that?
Okay.
At least from January on, so that we can look at it before we address this bill on the floor. With that, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to provide my comments and questions.
Thank you, Senator. You are welcome. Senator Tydewee?
Situus Masling, Madam Chair. Mr. Well, Chief or Director, I'll call you Ike. I know he was Ike, but Ike, fifteen, you mentioned about fifteen inspections. Is that monthly or weekly or daily that we got a number?
That can be daily.
So fifteen inspections daily?
Yes.
That is not during eight to five?
That's right.
Okay, so daily. So you're looking at times four, so you're, okay. Sixty a month, okay. You know, I have to ask this question. The bill, I mean, you're following what's already in Guam code annotated, right? The law that says 275, that's already in law, right? Why was it put there in the first place?
I'm not too sure. I was not here when they initiated the quota. Maybe one of my officers.
Mr. Tyron, I know you've been with customs for quite some time. Maybe you can enlighten me on why this law is currently in law for, I mean, I'm sure that there was a reason why we put 275 cap on it. I think my colleague Senator Brown, who I have a concern with with regards to, you know, passing this cost on to the customers, you know, are, it's bad enough, everything is rising in cost, and if we're changing this and leaving it like an open book as far as what we can charge these businesses, it's only going to be passed on to the consumer. So I think maybe that has something to do with it, but I know you've been there, Mr. Tyron. You're now captain or colonel? I'm sorry.
Colonel, Senator.
Colonel, okay. Now I want to make sure I get that right. So Colonel Tyron, can you explain?
How today, Senator, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. I'm Colonel Tyron from the Customs and Quarantine Agency. I'm the acting chief today because Chief Perez is on military leave. One of the reasons I'm aware of that the cap was set in place was because of officer fatigue. The director at the time was concerned that officers would be performing hours in excess of sixteen hours in a day, and that number was identified as a means to control officers being overworked and fatigued.
The 275 cap, right, that's a, it's amount that's charged to consumers, correct? The consumer that wants their, their?
That's not the rate that is charged, Senator. That's just the, that's just the ceiling right there.
The ceiling, right.
Yeah, no officer can exceed that.
Exceed that, right.
And in fact, that cap has prevented a lot of senior ranking officers from taking on assignments that would cause them to abuse the system because they exceed, they're not going to be able to accomplish clearing a vessel along with their junior officers because of the rate that they make. So they might have to clock out two hours into the clearance of that vessel. And so that's one of the reasons we're trying to remove the cap.
So that you can continue to charge this amount to the business?
To the requestor, who requested voluntarily for this service. You know, in the business, you know, part of what we're missing, I completely understand the discussion on people taking advantage and corruption. Those people have been caught and they were taken care of. Now, if there are others that still exist, we're going to find those people and take care of them as well. We'll get there. But going back to this program, the program exists for us to provide a service, a voluntary and a service that's on request. At any time during this process, the requestor can say, hey, I ran out of money, Mr. Officer, can we just stop here? And then what will happen is that we'll have to find another officer to come in and accomplish or finish that request. Or the cargo would have to be held and then cleared the next day. And a lot of times, the business people that are requesting this clearance, they're requesting so so they can have a competitive advantage over their business competitors. And that's the way I understand it. None of this is being forced on them. If they request it, we have a policy that's set in place, the requirements are clear, there's a rotation, as the director described, we have a supplementary standby list. And in fact, that supplementary standby list is much shorter than it used to be. I will tell you one thing about our legacy officers or our tenured officers. They are probably the hardest working ones. They work the most ODS. And it's not, and I don't think, they're just engineered that way. They've become accustomed to working those extra hours. And it's not because they're taking advantage of the roster. In fact, a lot of times, they can't work anymore because they've already exceeded the $275 cap. I hope that answers your question, Senator.
In a way, I'm just, you know, for those also trying to understand why we are lifting a cap and the concern of the consumer having any kind of additional fund being, you know, or fee to the, which is the business? Let's say a guy brings in can of Spam, right? And means, and that cap is now no longer in place, that means the customs can charge whatever they want to charge, or it could be up to $500 to $600, and that's going to be passed on to the consumer, right? So it's a concern, I think. So I'm just trying to see the pattern here, how much, you know, because it was put in law in the first place for a reason. So I'm trying to figure out what that reason was. And here we want to lift that cap and just have it open. So a customs officer is called to inspect a container at three o'clock in the morning. The officer comes and he's on, I guess, on a timeframe, right? Because it's his salary times three that you mentioned, right? Is that correct? Times three? So once he hits his salary, or it goes to 275, which probably won't happen, it takes how many hours, by the way, to clear containers? How, average? But a couple hours, three hours?
It does. It could take up to four hours, even six. But standard routine inspections where the risk is, where the risk is minimized because of our experience with the consignee or the owner of that container can change what the officer's discretion is as far as how in-depth the inspection goes.
So that one particular officer who comes, is it one or two that you should go? I mean, I'm sure you would want a backup, you know, someone there, right?
Right.
So is it 275 per officer or is it per inspection?
It's per, it's per request. I'm sorry, per officer.
Per officer, okay, 275. So it can go up to, you know, past $600 or 500, yeah, $600. So once they pass or exceed that timeframe, then they have to stop, right? Can the business owner who, you call the lessy, or what did you call them?
The customer.
The customer?
Requester.
The customer. He would have to, you would have to be relieved and call two more officers on duty to continue?
No, what, and that's, and that's why we're requesting for the cap to be removed. So this program is intended for the requestor to pay for all the costs.
Okay, so stop right there.
Yeah.
So this cap is based on the inspection? And the, because you're saying that's why you're requesting to lift the cap. I've asked that, it says each person at 275. You're not talking about the event itself. You've got two officers.
Right.
They can't exceed $275 each, right? Once it stops, they're, you know, they met that mark through their salary of 275, they have to leave?
No, that's not, that's not our, so the process, what happens is when they hit that cap, our policy is that those officers who took on that task revert to the government overtime. And so now this program that's supposed to be paid by the requestor is now being funded by the government of Guam.
I see.
So that's why we're requesting the cap removal, is so that the requestor continues to pay for what they're asking for.
So during the whole entire time, you can continue to charge him three times the salary for that individual, which is, which is just, right, you call them out at three o'clock?
Ma'am, the three times the salary is only for the first hour.
Oh, okay.
And then every hour after that is a time and a half.
So the cap is basically to allow you to continue, continue charging, you know, to continue on. I see. Okay, now it makes sense how this, how this all works. Do you actually have data available for the off-duty service costs that have been shifted to government of Guam? You know, from the?
I, I've not made that calculation.
You don't have those numbers? I mean, we're here discussing a bill that talks about numbers, you know, 275 lifting the cap, how much it's going to cost. We should at least have those numbers of when it shifts to government expense.
Okay, so we can provide that. I don't have that generic where you, we can, we don't work on getting that information.
I'm curious to see how much the government of Guam pays after they've reached that 275. Okay. And I think it was mentioned, everybody has an opportunity through a roster, how many customs officers are participating and take part of the OSDA program. You brought that up earlier. I have, I know that Chelsea's here. I'm glad she's here because it also, this bill strikes out Department of Agriculture. So can we explain why agriculture is striked out of this bill?
Would you like me, are you asking me, Senator?
I think.
Are you?
Well, she hasn't testified. Chelsea, are you here testifying on this bill? Are you familiar with this legislation? Can you answer my question as how you feel about agriculture being striked out on this, on this bill?
Can I answer the question first?
Sure.
Yeah, because I helped you craft this legislation.
Oh, okay.
The reason they're removed.
But then I want to hear from her too, as well.
Yeah, well, the reason they're removed is because this position no longer exists at the Department of Agriculture. When the PPQ was transferred to Guam Customs, that removed that position from the Department of Agriculture. So that's the reason.
I see.
We're making that recommendation.
Concur, Chelsea.
I do concur. That was going to be my response, is that it moved with the PPQ.
Okay, thank you so much. What methodology did the agency use to arrive at the proposed $8 administrative fee? And is the amount adequate to cover the actual costs that are involved in providing the off-duty services when requested?
Yes, Senator, that, that amount was determined by basing it on the current assigned clerk three that we have, whose sole duty is to perform, as the director testified, the reconciling, the collections and all the billing that's required. And so looking.
What background does that person have? I mean, are they a statistic major or what? I mean, how did you come up with this $8, other than it's just her?
That's, that's the, that's the rate. We looked at her annual salary and divided the, the total hours of work performed in a, in a year and came up with the hourly salary of $8.
Okay, that, that makes quite a sense.
For, I'm sorry, for the charge.
Okay, that's, that makes.
So the charge is based on the total instances that it could take place over a year and comparing that against the salary of our current, currently sitting clerk three.
Okay, well, how many businesses and individuals take advantage of this program? The ODC?
Based on the director's last testimony, daily, it could, it could consist from fifteen to twenty different consignees making the request.
By the way, was that in one airport is fifteen, or is that port fifteen, or is it combined?
When he says the airport, that's combined. When he says the airport, he means the air cargo.
Yep.
And the port cargo.
So that's, that's combined, fifteen a day is combined, right? Or I would say nighttime, because you guys only work, yeah. And that was another question I had, is why, why not make shifts, different shifts? You know, you have a group of custom officers who work from eight to five, and then you have custom officers working from five to, you know, eight hours into that time, so I'm.
We, we have been in front of this body and testified about the shortage of officers that we have. And in fact, back in 1995, we had, I believe, 250 officers, and today we only have 105. And so programs like this actually help the public, the business community to get their, their goods cleared. But without that, a lot of times, we're going to have to deny the request because we don't have adequate personnel on duty, even on shift, to, to perform these clearances. It's why these, the business community has sought to use this program in the past for the last two decades. It works for them.
Well, you know, we've had issues, of course, in the last few years because of the pandemic. But regarding the carryoff duty service revolving fund, how have pandemic-related restrictions and the frequency of the freight movement into Guam impact the ODS requests and fund collection since 2020?
Well, you know, for us, and even if we go into the port's annual report with regard to their throughput, there has not been much of an impact from COVID-19. And if the reduction was in place, it was small, at least from my review. As far as the airport, air cargo continued to come in similarly. And I don't have exact numbers, but if that's a figure that you might require, Senator, that'll have to be a do-out for me, if you require it.
Okay, the legislation seeks, you know, to delete the ODS cap of 275 per officer per day and instead adds Section 6224 of Article 2, Chapter 6, Title 4, GCA, which is the 10% hazardous duty pay rate. What is the intent of the 10% and what calculations have been determined to use this pay rate?
That 10% is the standard hazardous duty pay rate for customs officers. So when customs officers go out and perform that, that off-duty service, then they're entitled to that hazardous duty pay during that instance as well.
Yeah, okay, because it, well, you're taking out the cap and then you're adding that Section 6224. So the intent is just to, what is the 10% intent for? Just to include it into the bill to ensure the hazardous pays?
That is correct, because if we do not do that, then our officers are going to come back to the government and ask.
Which you have a hard time with DOA, right?
Well, no, that's already been resolved. That was actually.
Then is, if it's been resolved, then why are you putting it in?
Because in this program, it was not resolved. It has not been identified in this program.
Well, I heard you, I mean, we've heard the argument between DOA and the hazardous pay and why they haven't paid it out. And it took so long, you know, we've been trying to get that paid out. But it's been resolved in that perspective, so this is part of customs. I just don't, and you're using the same officers. So I just don't understand why it's needed.
Our, our regulation and the law restricts how it is that we pay. And in that, in the old, in the old language, there was no mention of the hazardous, the 10% hazardous duty pay being included in that. And that's the purpose for us introducing it in this legislation, is so the officers are compensated for that hazardous duty performance.
Okay.
And that 10% will be paid by the requestor as well. And if not them, then our officers will be coming to us, asking us to pay for that 10% because this is a customs program and we're supporting the program, allowing them to work, so.
Is any of the portions of the Carry-Off Duty Service Revolving Fund reserved for administrative expenses incurred by Customs and Quarantine or DOA?
I apologize. Could you repeat the question, Senator?
Sure, sure, yeah. Is there any portion of the Carry-Off Duty Service Resolving Fund? Revolving Fund, I'm sorry, not resolving, revolving fund, reserved for administrative expenses incurred by the Customs and Quarantine or DOA? Administrative.
No, no, Senator.
Okay.
The, the charge itself, whenever the billing is executed by the officer for the off-duty service charge, there is already the charge for the Department of Administration. It's included on the billing form. However, there is no method for customs to collect for the administrative processes performed by the customs personnel, our support, our admin support personnel. So again, this program is intended to be self-sustaining at no cost to the government, and that's our entire purpose for introducing these costs.
Okay, well, I appreciate you answering my questions, and I greatly appreciate the, the question I asked that you weren't able to provide me, and that is the cost for the government of Guam expense on the shift, once you shift from the, the cap over to government of Guam expense. So I'd like to see those numbers and to get a, more of a reality on how, how many participate on a daily basis, you know, if that's to, or on a weekly basis, something close enough to, to give us some numbers, you know, to be accurate. So again, I appreciate your time, and thank you, Chelsea, for being here too as well to answer that one question. Appreciate it, okay, and having your concurrence on this legislation as well. You do support it. I haven't heard anything from you. Do you, you support this legislation, or have you had a chance to review it at all?
I apologize, Senator. I, we received the legislation or the notice on Tuesday, so we've kind of been doing a really cursory review of it, so we don't have a comment at this time. Because, yeah, we would like to provide comment within the 10-day period.
Yeah, okay, yeah. It would be redundant, actually, if you had this. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Miss Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tydewee. I'd like to welcome my colleagues for joining us today, Senator Camacho Torres, thank you, and Senator Jim Moylan, thank you for being prompt. Senator Torres, do you have any questions or concerns on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was listening with great interest, the discussion that was going on about the implications of 292-36. But I think what I see in this bill is a very practical approach to what is right now an impractical situation for a lot of our businesses and also for customs. I see the, 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 the one thing about this bill is that it restores, restores a no-cost-to-government aspect of the off-duty services program, which I think is critical. So the, initially, the lifting of a cap always leaves one to wonder, you know, what then would be the negative downfall? But I think in this regard, the lifting of the cap, in fact, is a positive, not only in allowing for the greater availability of, availability of officers, but also the, the reduction of overtime cost and the reduction of comp time compensation, which also leads to a shortage in the, in the long run. So there are many things about, about why Bill Number 292-36 is a sensible fix right now for a situation with customs. I just wanted to have you, Director, talk a little bit about, about the the challenges that you have presently with, with the clearing of cargo. Because we, Guam being in its geographic location, we first of all have the inconvenience of time delay, right, waiting for shipments to come versus if we were on the continental U.S. and could receive things by truck or rail. So Guam already has that disadvantage of time. And then with the supply chain challenges that have happened as a result of COVID, access to supplies and goods has also been a challenge for many of our businesses. So would you agree that, that we are not only dealing with, addressing how to have more people available, but also having more goods readily available to our businesses and our community? By, by, through Bill 292, we make it easier for those two components to function? In terms of, of the? Sorry. We, we have right now businesses wanting the convenience of expediency, right? Access to their goods because there's not only the delay in getting goods, but there's a supply change, supply change shortage and challenge right now in, for the past two years. So would you agree that 292 also facilitates in that way our businesses and our community? Okay. Yeah, I, I saw the, in the bill too, I think what is, what is also one thing to note is, and I want you to discuss a little bit if you can, the availability of manpower, because I can see how if you, if you had to have a system that either caused you to give, to give comp time in exchange for pay, right? Then you're taking more men off of the line, right, more or less?
Yes.
Yeah, so then that just compounds your problem. But I think where, where I would support this bill is that 292, really, the, the, the option to utilize this off-duty services program is at the request of the, the businesses, correct?
Yes.
Who will then bear the expense of paying for that additional off-duty services program, right? Yeah, so it's, it seems like a sensible thing from, in terms of the businesses wanting access to their goods, which we know on Guam, sometimes it could be anything from a, a critical part for a repair or supplies for pharmacies or even food. That, you know, sometimes the delay of even one day is, is critical to the businesses and the, the community. So I, I don't, I don't find anything in your testimony alarming necessarily. I think that, that sometimes we have situations where expediency and efficiency and operations need to be smoothed out. And if something like having a cap, you know, that prohibits you from going beyond or, or it then triggers you to pay more out of the government coffers, I think that those things need to be corrected. And, and I would agree with you, also Major Tyron, that, that 292. And, and I would agree with you, also Major Tyron, that, that 292 has that advantage of, of easing up. And the only last comment I want to make, Madam Chair, is that the fiscal note does indicate that this will have, will allow for greater revenues to Customs and Quarantines, which, which is always a challenge, especially now to your, your agency. Would you agree?
I agree.
Okay. Now, I don't, I don't have any other further comments, I just, I just think generally it, it seems to be a sensible fix to what has been a challenge for the agency, and perhaps more advantageous than there would be negative repercussions, because those negative repercussions are really at the discretion of the businesses who bear that expense anyways. The pass-through, of course, is, is something that we understand, but that's not a general rule with Bill 292. It doesn't automatically implicate that there will be added costs, because there's situations that would prompt a business to request and pay for those additional services, which anyone who understands business understands that there are times when you absolutely need something and you're willing to pay top dollar to access your goods. So this is one of those situations, which I think is, it's, it's very real and practical right now, so. Situs mase for your testimony also.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Moylan, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the panel and this bill, on 292. Appreciate the explanation, it's pretty clear. My colleague, Senator Torres here, was also hit it right on the nose, I think, something we need to get done, helpful for the business community as well, while we work to increase the manpower that Customs desperately needs, so. Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. So before we move on to the next bill, I just want to reiterate the request by members of this panel here, is the amount that the government pays after the cap is completed, or however they had supplemented it. And I think, Senator Tied agree, you had a request also for information? Oh, that was it? Okay, so just that one item? Okay. Okay, and the, the process on how you identify officers that are assigned to perform this off-duty service, and a roster of the previous services that you provided for the client in reference to off-duty service?
Yeah, on an average, Madam Chair, on an average, how many do they service on an average, on a daily basis, for both port and airport? Thank you.
So the average of the service, the off-duty service on a daily rate, how much you provide for both the ports and the airports? Okay? If you could submit that to the committee? Thank you very much. Okay, we are, we are concluding with Bill Number 292-36 LS, and now we will move forward with Bill Number 114-36 COR. Bill Number 114-36 COR is an Act to Amend subsection 73102, 73107, 73109, 73141, and 73142 of Chapter 73, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the powers of custom officers, definition, guard on vessels, place of inspection and release of sealed cargo at Guam's port of entry, and to further updating the penalties in violation of the statutory requirements. This bill looks to add the, item five, to exercise authority to carry out and enforce provisions of the chapter and enforce the same provisions inclusive of making arrests, imposing fines, executing forfeiture, accessing fines, and making seizures, and to enforce other authority mandated by local and federal law, cooperative agreements or executive orders assigned to customs officers. There, this bill also allows customs officers to search any person, conveyance, vehicle, aircraft, vessel, and other contrivance present in, entering, and deporting Guam's ports, ports of entry, places of inspection designated by the director, customs areas of enforcement, customs jurisdictions, Guam borders, places that exist as functional equivalents of the border, and places of unlawful arrival and entry from a place outside of Guam, seized contraband discovered at Guam's ports of entry, places of inspection designated by the director, customs areas of enforcement, customs jurisdictions, Guam's borders, places that exist as functional equivalents of the border, and places of unlawful arrival and entry from a place outside of Guam. Exercise the authority to inspect, whereas the director is authorized and empowered to designate customs officers or agents to enter upon and search any article, merchandise, vehicle, vessel, aircraft, other conveyance, beast, envelope, container, or person entering or departing Guam without a warrant and without suspicion to ensure compliance with the provisions of this chapter and any other applicable law. Also to x-ray magnetic resonance image and use other available body scanning and imaging technology for the body of a person, and examine images with these procedures for detecting secreted goods when the person has consent to an x-ray of their body, or when a search warrant has been obtained to perform these procedures. Also with the availability to arrest a person against whom a reasonable suspicion exists that he has been guilty of an offense under this act, obtain a search warrant from a magistrate, examine books and witnesses, and in any investigation or inquiry conducted for the purpose of ascertaining the correctness of any entry for determining the liability of any person for fees and taxes due, or fees and taxes which may be due Guam, for determining liability for fines and penalties, or for ensuring compliance with the laws of Guam administered by the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. The director or those he designates may examine records, documents, books, and any record which for purposes of this section includes but is not limited to any statement, declaration, document, or electronically generated or machine-readable data described in the director's notice with reasonable specificity which may be relevant to such investigation or inquiry, except that if such record is required by law or regulation for the entry of the merchandise, whether or not the agency required its presentation at the time of entry, it shall be provided to the agency within a reasonable time after demand for its production is made, taken into consideration the number, type, and age of the item demanded, and summon upon reasonable notice persons who imported or knowingly caused to be imported merchandise into the customs jurisdiction of Guam, transported or stored merchandise that was or is carried or held under customs bond, or knowingly caused such transportation or storage, or filed a declaration, entry, or drawback claim with the agencies, importers, brokers, governments of Guam issuers of licenses and permits, general managers, senior executives, and operators of Guam airports and seaports. Penalties, information defined for purpose of this subsection. The term information means any record, statement, declaration, document, or electronically stored or transmitted information or data referred to subsection AI of this section. If the failure to comply is a result of the willful failure of the person to maintain, store, or retrieve the demanded information, such persons shall be subject to a penalty for each release of merchandise not to exceed $100,000, or an amount equal to 75% of the appraised value of the merchandise, whichever amount is less. If the failure to comply is a result of the negligence of the person in maintaining, storing, or retrieving demanded information, such persons shall be subject to a penalty for each release of merchandise not to exceed $10,000, or an amount equal to 40% of the appraised value of the merchandise, whichever amount is less. Avoidance of penalty, no penalty may be assessed under this subsection if the person can show that the loss of the demanded information was a result of an act of God, or other natural casualty or disaster beyond the fault of such person or an agent of the person, on the basis of the other evidence satisfactory to the agency that the demand was substantially complied with, or the information demanded was presented to and retained by the agency at the time of entry or submitted in response to an earlier demand. Custom summons, nothing in this subsection shall limit or preclude the agency from issuing or seeking the enforcement of custom summons. In regard to subsection 73107, guard on vessels, every commercial vessel entering a port of Guam or anchoring or lying to in Guam waters shall be placed under guard during her stay. Boarding and discharging officers or agents, the appropriate customs officer in which any vessel, aircraft, or conveyance arrives from a port of place outside of Guam, may put on board of such vessel, aircraft, or conveyance, and if necessary, while going from one pier or birthing site, one or more customs officers or agents to examine the cargo and contents of such vessel, aircraft, or convey, or conveyance, and superintend the unlading thereof, and to perform such other duties as may be required by the law or the customs regulations. Such customs officer or agent may, if he shall deem the, the same necessary, secure the hatches or other communication or outlets of such vessels, aircraft, or conveyance with customs seals or other proper fastenings while such vessel, aircraft, or conveyance is not in the act of unlading, and such fastening shall not be removed without permission of the customs officer or agent. Such customs officer or agent may require any vessel, aircraft, or conveyance to discontinue or suspend unlading during the continuance of unfavorable weather, or any conditions rendering the discharge of cargo. Dangerous or detrimental to life of property and the owner, agent of the owner, or member of the crew of any such vessel who obstructs or hinders any such inspector or other customs officers, and the performance of his duties shall be subject to a penalty of $10,000. Such custom officer may also deem necessary in placing a guard on commercial vessels entering a port of Guam, or anchoring or lying in Guam waters during her stay. This is pretty large. So we did have a, there's additions also for definitions that defines areas of this, of this bill, and then we do have a detailed place of inspection added. And as a result of this bill, we did hold a public hearing on, what was it? I'm sorry, we held a roundtable hearing just recently, I believe this was in April of 2022. And there were some things that were brought up, but I would like to state for the record that this bill was introduced in April 13th, 2021. There was a request from Customs and Quarantine Agency to postpone the hearing of the bill, awaiting legal guidance on September 2021. And then there was another request to postpone hearing of the bill on October 11th, 2021, and again in January 19th of 2022. We did ask the Attorney General's Office for an opinion on the bill several times. The first time was in January 25th, 2022, February 8th, 2022, February 25th, 2022, March 10th, 2022, March 18th, 2022, and March 31st, 2022. And then we held the roundtable hearing on April 18th, 2022, which, Director, you were present, members of Customs and Quarantine Agency was present, I believe the chief was present. We also had the Airport Authority present. We did get a testimony from the Port Authority of Guam, Mr., the General Manager Rory Rispischo. He was not present at that time, but we did receive a testimony on some of the concerns that they, that he had on the bill. So just with regards, as a summary, from the roundtable hearing, there was requests to change verbiage for the legislative findings and intent, which is to address the current and ongoing inter-agency partnerships the Customs and Quarantine Agency has with the Port Authority of Guam and the Guam International Port Authority. So in essence, it was just to make sure that we acknowledge that there is collaboration going on between the agencies that are receiving cargo through our seaports and our airports. Another addition of, another request was the addition of the word aircraft to section 73107, guard on vessels or aircraft, that's where we would add that word, an addition on the term inspectors, to also place it under the definition of collector in section, subsection 73109, an addition of the verbiage, subject to the approval of the Magahaga Wahan under the definition of organization in subsection 73109, an addition of the verbiage of laws applicable to Guam under item F of subsection 73141, place of inspection. Some of the items that were brought up, as a note, the Guam International Airport Authority continues to work in collaboration with Customs and Quarantine Agency in their enforcement efforts and expresses support for the bill. The Port Authority of Guam continues to work in collaboration with Customs and Quarantine in their enforcement efforts, and states that the agency involved in this bill will enter into a memorandum of understanding for concurrent jurisdiction once the MOU is signed. Is that signed? Do you have an MOU signed between the Port Authority of Guam and yourself yet?
Madam Chair, there was a discussion about an MOU, but there was not a final agreement made that Guam Customs would enter into an MOU with the port with regard to our authorities and place of inspection.
Thank you. It will be presented to the legislature to be codified. The Port Authority of Guam supports the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, and advised that the bill be put on hold until a legal opinion from the Attorney General regarding the bill has been rendered. So we have been waiting for over a year for a legal opinion from the Attorney General with multiple amounts of follow-ups for their legal opinion. The amendments brought forth in Bill Number 114-36 U R was due to the current statutes of the customs, Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency being outdated, so in essence, the current statutes we have are not updated, so this will allow you to be able to improve your operations, give you the flexibility and authority as Customs and Quarantine Agency officers, especially since we do not have a Customs and Border Protection on Guam, which is very unique amongst the territories. With regards to customs jurisdictions off the coastline of Guam, the Customs and Quarantine Agency have a joint agreement with NOAA where they fund certain portion, where they fund a certain portion of the agency's resources and provide manpower, equipment, and vessels to monitor the coastlines. Another item was that the Customs and Quarantine Agency is looking into additional funding through grants, asset sharing, and programs to help maintain and increase their resources. And with regards to seizure of illegal items brought into customs, the Customs and Quarantine Agency will work with the multiple agencies and entities depending on what was confiscated. For fruits and vegetables confiscated, the Customs and Quarantine Agency works with the Department of Agriculture. For medicinal drugs, the agency works with Public Health. For narcotics, Customs and Quarantine can hold it for evidentiary purposes or for testing, but will eventually relinquish it to its respective agency. Another item in the roundtable is that it was clarified that all items seized by Customs must follow the policy as it relates to interception. The agency has a property evidence custodians office, which is also known as PECO, that documents and stores all items that are seized. There is a recommendation that the agency develop a system to track these seized items from seizure to relinquishing of, of items to proper agencies to final disposal. And lastly, the Customs Quarantine Agency will provide the committee with the list of their unfunded mandates in the public hearing for Bill Number 114-36. So I hope that we have a list of those unfunded mandates today, and if they are not provided, then we will accept them in our committee if you, once you submit it, within the 10 days, I hope that you can do that on time. Okay. I know, Director Paredo, that you may have now probably changed your tune to whether you support this bill or not, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to give testimony on this bill.
Thank you, Miss Madam Chairman, and members of the committee. Again, my name is Ike Paredo, I'm the Director of Customs, and I have my two officers, Colonel Tyron and CQ3 General Manager Mina Dela with me today. With regards to Bill 114, an Act to amend the 73102, 107, 109, 104, 142, 73, Title V of the Guam Code Annotated relative to the powers of Customs, and of course, it mentions about guards on vessel, place of inspection, and release of sealed cargo at Guam's port of entry, and to further update the penalties and violations. I did submit something requesting to reserve comment. I did submit something requesting to reserve comment, uh, until the completion of, uh, the legal review from the Attorney General, but as of 3 o'clock, I would say 2:30 today, we managed to make contact with the Attorney General's Office, and they, uh, they managed to provide us some sort of information insofar as their process in reviewing the, the, uh, the Bill 114, and in which they have mentioned that they, they need to continue working because they need to further do their research so that we can continue to collaborate and understand a lot of the concerns and issues of this bill. From a legal standpoint, they're saying that there's, there's certain comments or there's certain items in the bill that needs to be refined, and, and for that reason, that's why I presented my testimony, not to, to continue the, the, the completion of this particular bill or, or move forward with the bill until we have, uh, finalized our collaboration with the Attorney General's Office, the Attorney General's Office. And I'll have Colonel Tyron further expand on that.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Madam Chair, um, the esteemed members of this, uh, committee, the communication we had with the Attorney General's Office was, uh, we are a client, and, uh, as far as their, um, relationship with us, uh, they are to provide us guidance, and from that guidance, we will proceed forward to further collaborate with the committee, uh, on this actual bill, and that, uh, there's a hope that the legislative legal, uh, team will be able to assist us specifically with the, um, some of the guidance that they have presented to us. We were in the dark for a long time, but we've actually have some bullets, uh, that they presented to us, and, uh, we'll, we can proceed from there. That's where we're at at this time, Madam Chair.
Did they, so is this, uh, their final guidance, or are they saying, here's a little bit of what we found, give us another five months to figure it out?
Madam Chair, I would have to say that, uh, this is not their final guidance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we will postpone this hearing on Bill Number 114-36. Once the Attorney General gives their guidance to the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, we do have our legal, uh, reviewing this bill to ensure that it is aligned with the, uh, our current statutes and also aligned with the organic act of Guam, which I believe is aligned, but I'm not a lawyer, unfortunately. Okay, so then we will move on to the, uh, next bill that we have on the agenda, which is Bill Number 289-36 LS, which is an act to add a new subsection 73157 to Article 1 of Chapter 73, Title V, Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency reorganization authority for the purpose of providing assistance to better safeguard our island and shall be known as the Reorganization Act of 2022. Basically, this bill provides a new section that reads reorganization authority. The director is authorized to reorganize the agency in accordance with the administrative adjudication law to address Guam's needs in safeguarding the ports of entry, and to initiate the creation and establishment and expansion of new and existing entities within the agency for this purpose. The agency shall develop a budget for reorganization, which shall be forwarded to I Magahagan Guahan and I La Satoran Guahan for consideration. The agency shall also consider pursuing federal grants that may be available to support the reorganization of the agency, and this is very key, especially as we look at biosecurity. The director or his designee shall be responsible for the development of a set of written guidelines to control the expenditure of the said budget. The director shall submit a report detailing expenditure to the Bureau of Budget and Management Research for audit and approval. No later than six months following the enactment of this act, the agency shall submit together with the budget required herein an action plan that must include, but not limited to, a project schedule, staffing pattern, and the identification of funding options, if any. A status report summarizing the actions of the agency shall be submitted to I Magahagan Guahan and I La Satoran Guahan every three months following the submission of the action plan and proposed budget. And so we are looking for the Section 3 Biosecurity Division authorized pursuant to the director's reorganization authority. The Customs and Quarantine Agency is authorized to create a biosecurity division to prevent the introduction of invasive species at Guam's ports of entry. The biosecurity division shall provide for the inspection, quarantine, and eradication of invasive species contained in any freight, including, but not limited to, marine commercial container shipments, mail post, and aircraft cargo. In efforts, in efforts to address invasive species coming to Guam through its ports of entry, the biosecurity division shall continue to work with the biosecurity division of agriculture, of the Department of Agriculture for this purpose. In Section 4, there's included an MIS section which is authorized pursuant to the director's reorganization authority. The Customs and Quarantine Agency is authorized to create a management information systems section for the purpose to centralizing and streamlining the agency's information management. When deemed necessary, the director is authorized to reorganize the MIS section into a division within the agency. Section 5, the MARSET, section is authorized pursuant to director's reorganization authority. The Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency is authorized to create and establish the maritime contraband enforcement team to meet the current demands at the Port Authority of Guam. And so essentially, we are looking to include the biosecurity division within the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. We believe that this bill will help, uh, the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, especially in respect to the current land that was in agreement with the Port Authority of Guam to receive federal funding. And so, Director, I offer you the time to give testimony on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the committee. I'm going to start out by saying that in May of 2011, Public Law 3143 authorized the establishment of the Invasion Species Inspection Fee Fund. It also authorized the Director of Department of Agriculture to establish-
Director, forgive me, can you please speak into the mic? Can you just bring it closer to you?
Let me just start. In May of 2011, Public Law 3143 authorized the establishment of the Invasion Species Inspection Fee and Fund. It also authorized the Director of Department of Agriculture to establish the biosecurity division and authorized the Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency to reorganize the agency to establish a biosecurity division in accordance with the administrative adjudication law. Over the past 11 years, the Customs and Quarantine Agency has achieved successful accomplishment of our biosecurity core competency, using assignments of officers to a biosecurity task force. The task force was assigned customs officers who are dedicated and were certified to fulfill their biosecurity mission. This task force was comprised of the Agriculture K-9 Unit, the Biosecurity Unit. Guam Customs desires to achieve the ideal organizational structure that will make permanent and fully fund Guam Customs Biosecurity Division, as well as all other necessary organizational elements identified. I sought the advice of legal counsel regarding 289-36, and I was advised that this bill conflicts with the governor's authority to reorganize the executive branch of the government of Guam. At this time, we are requesting that Bill 289-36 be withdrawn so that Guam Customs can pursue reorganization using the governor's reorganization authority. There will be much work to do for this reorganization to occur, and Guam Customs will rise to the challenge. Although we cannot support Bill 289-36, I appreciate this opportunity to provide testimony. We ask for your continued support, and we perform the actions to accomplish our border enforcement missions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Do you believe that the biosecurity division is needed in the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency?
Yes.
Okay. I also spoke with our legal, and their opinion states that in regards to Bordaleo versus Baldwin, the legislature has the authority to establish this division within the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. And so, um, I'm just curious as to why the administration would say to not support this bill if you believe that this bill is, if you believe that this is greatly needed within the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. And so I do want to ask, um, for the land that was obtained with the Port Authority of Guam for the biosecurity division, how is that going to be funded?
Uh, the, the, the container inspection station that we're trying to, to build down at the port is, the, the funding source is, is coming out of the, the front office, and they're trying to find the, the means to, uh, to provide the funding to build that facility.
Okay, are they able to currently use ARP funds to build this facility?
No, I don't think so.
What is needed to utilize ARP funds to build the facility?
I'm not aware. I'm not aware. The other thing, the only thing I can say right now is that the funding that I'm looking at for this particular project is that the new bill that was signed, which is the infrastructure bill, I have met with the individual that's responsible for moving forward with the construction bill, such as, uh, I think his name is Phil, Mr. Tyron, to see whether we can avail ourselves with any type of funding under this particular construction bill to build the facility.
Okay, from my understanding is that the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency has to have a biosecurity division in order to utilize ARP funds to assist with the build of this specific facility. So I will just open up any questions that the panel may have. Senator Brown, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't know if it's questioned so much because it sounds like the director is not going to have testimony on this particular bill moving forward, but I do want to bring up the point with one of the things proposed is the creation of the biosecurity division, which my understanding has been identified and has existed in customs the last few years, at least. Customs was projecting that they had a biosecurity division and specific customs officers that were assigned to customs. When the transfer from PPQ originally occurred after 9/11, there were funds, to my understanding, that were also transferred with the employees that eventually were taken and absorbed by customs. Are you aware of that, and what is the source of that funding, and is customs continuing to receive that funding?
Yes, Senator, thank you for that question. That funding was part of the passenger inspection fund that was coming up for the, uh, the PPQ at the time. That's my understanding.
So that funding also went with the employees that were taken from Department of Agriculture. At the same time, we had the 31st Guam Legislature, of course, as identified in the bill with the passage of Bill 11, 111, 11131, uh, gave the authority to Department of Agriculture to also establish a biosecurity division, uh, and also created the inspection, invasive species inspections fee, as well as the council. So if I could ask for agriculture, I mean, are we creating two biosecurity divisions of what originally was a single one, and then we're double funding it? And I mean, I'm all for, you know, addressing invasive species. I've had a little more hands-on work with regards to that, but I don't know if it was something we should duplicate in the government, and then there's double cost to doing it. Are you able to, to respond, Madam Director?
Sorry. Good afternoon, honorable chairwoman and senators.
Forgive me, Chelsea. Did you have a testimony?
I, not a written testimony at this time, but I do want to be able to comment on it.
Yeah, absolutely. Forgive me, I'm sorry.
Yes, the Guam Department of Agriculture has our biosecurity division, um, equipped with our entomologist, our invasive species coordinator, uh, commodity inspectors, agricultural technicians. We currently conduct research, treatment services at our ports of entry, um, to some extent, uh, species interdiction, um, disease interdiction, and we work in collaboration with the biosecurity task force of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. It would be duplicative to have a secondary biosecurity division. Does, and the questions that that posed for us would, were along the lines of then would we have a second entomologist or a secondary botanist or invasive species coordinator? And then would that create a conflict of final authority or final say over a proper But otherwise, we've been working towards a very integrated and collaborative relationship with Customs and Quarantine, um, and both agencies have been receptive to discussions about how we can make the collaborative relationship more effective, um, and efficient at the mandates, at serving the mandates.
Well, you handled that very delicately, and I'm glad. I don't necessarily want to pressure you and putting you in an awkward position, but it does duplicate efforts, and I think that's probably a policy call that we need to deliberate on our side and determine, is this the most effective use of, of the funds that are either being paid through the passenger fee, because that originally was the funding source for PPQ that was under the jurisdiction of Department of Agriculture? Because what the legislature previously what did was go back and create another funding source again that taps on, uh, not, you know, not, not just the, the businesses that are bringing this cargo in, but ultimately the consumers of Guam are also double paying for another division to essentially recreate what the Department of Agriculture previously had under PPQ that still worked in coordination with customs, but you simply had a customs inspector there addressing their jurisdiction with, you know, contraband and other illegal goods or goods that were not properly declared coming in, and then PPQ was there specifically to look at its expertise to determine whether or not we had viruses and, you know, insects and other invasives coming into the island, whether or not that would be permitted or authorized. So that's probably a question, because I do kind of have an issue with the duplicative creation. I don't know if we simply should phase out those employees that were absorbed by customs that eventually soon will retire, just because it's been so many years. It's been almost, what, 21 years? And do we double charge and duplicate that issue? And I don't know, perhaps if customs would prefer to go back to their main duties of, because we obviously have a major issue of illegal drugs coming into Guam and focusing their efforts there. So I just think that's a, that's a policy question we need to look at. And I'm not going to ask you, Mr. Director, you've already, you've already relayed perhaps, you're, you're not going to provide formal testimony yet on this bill, but I think for our colleagues to be aware, if we're creating these other divisions, I understand your need for an IT division and your maritime division that I assume you're already putting in place. Do you have that already designated in your operations now? You're specific, we've had it in the past, your, your customs officer specifically assigned to the maritime division at the port, uh, to perform those inspections within that jurisdiction. So are we just formalizing what has already existed? I mean, you were asking for pure space at the dock to be able to, you know, secure your boats and be able to go out in the harbor and do your inspection, so this is not new. Are we just formalizing it because it doesn't, it says that, you know, you're going to come back and look at funding, I assume, come back to the Guam Legislature and request funding? You're going to develop a budget, which I assume is to come back and address or have the legislature address additional funding? Again, I'm just wondering that, not, not that these needs are not important or necessary, but you know, we're, we're currently now out of the general fund subsidizing the operations of customs because of this pandemic, and my hope ultimately is originally envisioned when, when customs was put under its own revenue stream, is to return to that, because I do believe the time will come, the general fund will not be able to absorb all these costs. You know, once this federal funding decreases, uh, we're going to be in a very tight situation. And so if, if we're looking at again additional costs being added, that's going to be added to the taxpayers through, um, the general fund, that would be a concern. I have no objection to the need for these operations. I can understand how critical they are, except biosecurity vision, we need to go back and look at that. But if it's looking at coming back and asking for more funds out of the general fund, that would be a concern as well, because again, that adds additional costs that we've not incurred. But at least for one thing, don't you have your maritime division? Do you currently have officers designated specialized in maritime inspection?
Yes, yes, we do have a, uh, a maritime inspection team that is, that we're working in cooperation with NOAA. So NOAA is, is a cooperative agreement. NOAA funds a lot of the equipment-
Right.
-that, that, that they're using down at the port, and, uh, they have specific guidelines insofar as, uh, based on the, uh, on the commitment that we've made, that we will enforce certain federal laws that NOAA wants us to, to engage in, such as fisheries, endangered species, and, and that's what the maritime inspection task force are all, all about. force are all about. The MARSET section are the individuals that work within the, the sterile area, for example, at the port. They, they concentrate on the operation within that particular work area, making sure that whatever containers that are coming in or leaving are, are also fully sailed. They, they also monitor the movement of, of crew members that are coming in and out of, of, of the vessel at that particular time. But with respect to the biosecurity section, I would like to have Colonel Tyron explain that process to you.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Madam Chair and esteemed members of the committee. Again, Senator Brown, with regard to the comments and questions that you made, the, I'd like to hit up first the duplicative processes that you spoke of. Now, I think we're belaboring this process because the director's already stated that we're not pressing forward with the bill as it is, but for the purpose of our public who's listening, I'll provide you this information. And the biosecurity mission is not duplicative at this point. It has been separated. The customs agency performs the border biosecurity functions and our counterparts perform the inland biosecurity functions. If we were to stand up a fully functional biosecurity division, then at that point, this body would be in an appropriate position to determine if there were duplications. If there were three, a plant botanist, plant pathologist, and an entomologist that existed in both biosecurity divisions, both at the border and inland, then of course it would be prudent to, to determine which one should not be present. And I believe by that point, we should be able to make a clear determination of that. I have statistics with regard to the work that our officers perform at the border and I, I can provide that, I can provide it now and I can provide it at a later time. I just don't know if it's appropriate because we're not pressing forward with the reorg.
No, I, I understand. I'm not asking further with, I think that's a policy decision the legislature needs to make. I mean, there's nothing to prevent us from authorizing through law that the biosecurity division of the Department of Agriculture also be present during these inspections. Customs is our creation, it's our authorization, it's not a federal entity, which of course we argue maybe it should be federally funded because you're asked to do a lot of the work that federal customs would do. So I understand, I'm not asking you to, to push further. I mean, you did relay, Mr. Director, your position at this point with regards to this bill. I'm just simply adding in review of it that it would add additional costs, which again, I understand the need for it, but at this time when you're being subsidized by the general fund and by the, by the direct public, when we have many, many, many obligations as well, I mean, the hope of having you under your own source of funding was so that you had your own independent source to operate because there are many other obligations of this government, obviously, that don't generate revenue, that provide a service. And we would desperately need that money to, to address funding of those critical needs as this federal money dries up. So I'm simply relaying that. With that, Madam Chair, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tyree.
You know, I too have the same concerns. I was looking at Chelsea during the whole reading of your testimony, Mr. Director, you know, trying to figure out if she concurs basically to stand down from this bill. But currently, how, how is agriculture working with customs when it comes to these inspections currently now? Can one of your individuals from agriculture, yes, and just introduce yourself, your name and, and what you, your position?
Hafaday, my name is Glenn Dula and I'm the invasive species coordinator for the biosecurity division of Department of Agriculture.
Hafaday.
So myself and Chris Rosario, we are a team of, you know, a few, a handful of employees at the biosecurity division and we work daily hand in hand with the other eight Guam customs employees that are in the biosecurity task force. So on a regular daily basis, the customs officers do the inspections at the border. That's their jurisdiction. Anything that they find, they bring to us for identification and for subject matter expertise. You know, not to say that they're not well-educated and capable of making those decisions on their own, it's just our separate jurisdiction. So, and that's afforded to us either through whatever, GCA, 5GCA Chapter 61, or through MOUs through the USDA. And that's, that's the way it was set up through our interagency work plan. So definitely, you know, we work well as a unit. You know, we each perform a separate function that complements each other and we get the job done. And if anything leads to the increase of funding or manpower for either agency to supplement that, I'd just like to say I'm in support of that.
Yeah, I'd like to add again, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Rosario from Biosecurity Division. And just to add to what Glenn had mentioned, yes, we do work collaboratively, collaboratively. In fact, when, when I first started at the biosecurity division at the plant inspection station, I thought, I thought we were actually just one unit and beginning to find out after several months, I, I found that there's a specific flow chart and I could always, I do this in my presentations off-island and also here, but the, the flow chart really, it, it comes down to the, the customs quarantine, they intercept the, the commodities and then of course they ask us for essentially the technical guidance, whether it's identifying an insect on a plant or identifying a pathogen on a plant. So by that, that collaborative effort really helps kind of get the job done between, again, when we create these, when we have agricultural disposition forms, these forms are then filled out, signed off by either the plant pathologists or the entomologists. And, and then we kind of move forward with the, again, the whole point was we don't want to hold off commerce, so we try and keep that moving with that flow chart, so.
So it sounds like it's, it's going pretty smooth right now, right? I'm sure not everything's perfect and, and as you move forward, if issues arise, and always money is going to be an issue, you know, to support the enforcement for that. So, yeah, I mean.
And additionally too, we, we also apply for a federal funding and these federal funding does help solidify the, the collaboration between Department of Ag and, and customs and quarantine. We, we can provide the training that is needed to help identify insects at the, at the ports of entry. And that's what many of our federal grants are coming out from, at least within the next, within the next year or so, is to help customs and quarantine to, to be able to identify insects and plant pathogens at the ports of entry, so.
Well, goodness knows, we know that agriculture is doing their part, you know, generating a lot of federal funding, you know. I, I think one of the largest of any other agency that has, went after grants and federal funding, so I commend Department of Agriculture for that. Is there any current, currently an MOU in place between agriculture and customs at all?
Oh, we have an interagency work plan.
I'm sorry, say again.
Interagency work plan.
Okay.
Not an MOU.
Inter, okay, interagency biosecurity work plan, right? That, that, okay, that one is your MOU in between. It, it kind of spells, spells it out here between, okay. Yep, it's, okay, well, I appreciate your time, Director, for your testimony and of course, customs and quarantine for being here, of course, agriculture. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Torres.
Chelsea, if, if I can ask you, the, the bill, as I understand, the, the main thrust of the bill is to allow for a reorganization so that, and to authorize the creation of a biosecurity division with customs and quarantine. That, that essentially is what this bill does. But right now, the, the biosecurity division is, is entrusted to Department of Agriculture in line with all the USDA mandates and, and all of that. So I just want you to, to discuss a little bit about, about the authority of biosecurity division and, and the, the, where I'm getting at is I, I'm trying to understand whether the authority and the expertise and the subject matter is best borne and contained and maintained with Department of Agriculture and nowhere else in terms of creating a division. Would you agree that the authority for biosecurity division should be and continue to remain solely with Department of Agriculture?
I would say that, that's a great question. At this time, we have the, an MOA or a cooperative agreement with the USDA, AFS section. Dr. Dula and Mr. Rosario are both identified as USDA pest or plant, plant, pest identifiers, which is a recognition afforded to them through the USDA, which allows Guam to maintain its unique, its unique role within the nation as a plant inspection facility and a, as a sort of subset of AFIS, USDA AFIS. There's no other jurisdiction nationally that has that same granting through the USDA. So at this time with their expertise, yes, I would say that it's important that we maintain that relationship and that recognition and that status. Given that their specific backgrounds, their specific training is unique to plant and insect pests, that's their sole training and responsibility. And that provides a certain advantage to our agency, given that we also oversee the same species terrestrially and to some extent in the aquatic sector as well. So I guess short answer, yes.
And the reason I ask that is, the way that I understand the system is currently, if an inspector, say that the biosecurity task force, which are the enforcers of the, the restrictions that, that do you imply, that you, that you impose on the island, you know, where things are banned or prohibited from entering the border, if an inspector were to run across a specimen that is unclear or questionable, that, that, the vetting is always, they always defer to agriculture to vet and verify whether something is in fact a prohibited species or a, a dangerous item. So, so your role then in that capacity, it always, we always yield to agriculture as the experts in, in this matter, right, with biosecurity?
Yes.
Okay, and if you, if you want to comment further.
Yeah, in response to that, every day, well, we're, we, at least in, between Glenn and myself, not only that we're looking at pests that are currently on Guam, such as little fire ants or coconut rhinoceros beetle, we're, we're looking at pests that, that are in the tropics, that are in, that are prevalent in, in some of our commodities, lettuce, tomatoes, when they're, they're being brought in, we look at the potential pests that could be brought in on island. And so with those kind of pests, like, like this, this month, you know, we, we apply for federal funding, we call it like a CAPS survey. And these surveys, again, are, are looking at not just pests that are currently on Guam, but also that could potentially affect our ecosystem here. So, and mostly on our agricultural commodities, so just to add to that.
And then is there, is there also an enforcement arm within agriculture in terms of, of seizing and all that, or is, or is that a function of, of customs and quarantines at the borders? How does that work? I, I'm just trying to see how your, your, your roles lead into each other or are clearly delineated? So if either of you can comment.
Okay, so typically, the jurisdiction for inland work belongs to Guam Department of Agriculture. So anything that is smuggled, smuggled, that makes its way past the border, we have commodity inspectors that would seize those. Anything that's at the border is customs jurisdiction. And, and just to clarify a point from your previous question, there are some legacy PPQ officers that are now with customs that do have identify, identifier authority on some insects and diseases. In the past, they were afforded training by the USDA and, you know, they're allowed to make some of the same decisions that we are. But, but, you know, that's dwindling. Again, like, most of them are about to retire or have retired and that, that they are no, I'm not sure if they have access to that training anymore.
Well, thank you for your discussion. I, my, my concern always is, is when the buck stops somewhere, who is ultimately accountable? And, and that was why I asked about the authority and the expertise and, and anytime that that sort of authority is delegated either entirely in some situations or in a quasi-matter, it, it erodes that authority nonetheless. And that was why I brought that up because I think that the constant has to, there has to at least be one constant in every situation, right, where, where you know that, that when hell freezes over, this is an agency that's going to, to have to deal with it full on and with the support of others. And, and I, I think that that's where we're, that's a consideration that many of us are having, notwithstanding as Mr. Pareto brought up, the authority to reorganize, that's a different policy. But I mean fundamentally, when it comes to biosecurity, where the buck stops, I think, is, is what I was trying to establish and, and that would be with USDA, Department of Agriculture and the experts as, as you both all appear to be on this panel. So, Sisus Massey, that was my, my only thoughts and thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you, Senator Torres. I would like to ask Colonel Tyron, there has been concerns about the biosecurity division being a duplicative effort. Right now, Customs and Quarantine has a biosecurity task force. Can you explain to this body the difference between the functioning of customs and quarantine in biosecurity and the difference between Department of Agriculture? And if they are duplicative or not?
Yes, thank you for that, Madam Chair. There, there are, there is not a duplication. I think the best description was given by Chris Rosario, our entomologist, who spoke about a flow chart. And so, and also along with Dr. Dula, talking about what our roles are at the border. So we, we will intercept the items once we encounter them at the border. So the inspections and those type of activities which prevent incursion or items crossing the border is performed by customs. And once those items come across the border, I think this goes to Senator Torres's question is who actually owns this? And it, it's become a big, I mean, these are, these are long conversations that we've had amongst each other. It's one of the reasons I've had to actually step back and look at it. Mr. Roland Kedigwa, when he spoke about it, he says, listen, at the end of the day, we need this invasive species fund because we don't have the funds to address any incursions, the little fire ant, the coconut rhinoceros beetle, and at that time, we're busy chasing down the funds for that. But that's the role of our partners once things make it inland. Who owns it? I think we both do at the border. When the commodity inspectors do the, do the work properly and tell us that, hey, there's a problem here and we get immediate feedback from what it is that they're finding out on the, in the market, then we can send that information out in intelligence reports and warnings or lookouts to our officers at the border. And so when we work together, there, there's not a duplication. There's a function at the border and there's a function inland. I think sometimes where you might see the crossover is at the plant inspection facility. And that's because we require, if, if there was a clean transition between the plant, the plant inspection station and the entomologist to go with the PPQ officers when that first station and the entomologist to go with the PPQ officers when that first transition was made, then there might be a different conversation we're having today. But because the expertise existed with the Department of Agriculture at the time, and they also had the entomologist, it only made sense that we would support that initiative for the plant inspection station at the time, but today, plant inspection facility, to continue to exist, because it's intended to allow items to come in and also start to work at our export market for commodities that our farmers are interested, or the folks that are producing goods on Guam, to send out of the island. So that, I think, is the only area where, I mean, there might be others, but just at this point, without having had adequate time to really sit down and write a dissertation on this, because I could, right? I mean, if I really had to, I like to write and read, so. But, and I want people to be informed, you know, and I want to make the best decision for our public. At this time, no, there's not a duplication. Crossover occurs at the plant inspection station. We require their expertise. We work well together. I hope that answers the question.
Would creating the biosecurity division within the Customs and Quarantine Agency benefit the Customs and Quarantine Agency extending into the community of the people of Guam?
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, and then there's been no statement by Customs that we are not going to do this. It is just the vehicle and the mechanism that we're going to use. And so I understand, I took note of your Baldwin versus, Bernalio versus Baldwin. I'm going to definitely read this and get with my director and have a conversation about this. But at the end of the day, yes, we need a biosecurity division established. Public Law 3143 mandated us to do this action. We have just been having these personnel shortages. Whenever we get to a point of personnel staffing where we're getting ready to say, hey, let's get those 15 or 20 people, Dula had it, to perform biosecurity functions, we lose officers. The officers start leaving for federal jobs, and, you know, the governor is 18 percent. That helps us. We actually retained a bunch of officers who had a notion to leave the agency. So those are some of the things that are affecting us. But yes, we do need a biosecurity division in Customs. We will make that happen. Mr. Director, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And so I just find it curious, Director, that in your statement, you stated that Public Law 31-43, which is correct, authorized the establishment of the invasive species inspection fee and fund. It also authorized the Director of the Department of Agriculture to establish the biosecurity division and authorize the Director of the Customs and Quarantine Agency to reorganize the agency to also establish a biosecurity division. But, and this is curious, in the third paragraph, you said, I sought the advice of legal counsel, and I'm guessing, and I'm thinking, is this the legal counsel up in Adalou?
Yes.
Thank you. I sought the advice of legal counsel regarding Bill 289-36LS, and I was advised that this bill conflicts with the governor's authority to reorganize the executive branch of the government of Guam. But in the 31st Guam Legislature, I guess it depends on which legal counsel is giving advice, because it authorized Customs and Quarantine to secure that biosecurity division. But even though we worked months with you on this, we understood that this was something good for Customs moving forward. Today, we're singing a different tone. I don't know if it's politics, I don't know the reason behind it, but very well, then at least it's on for public record, that we tried to do two things today that we've worked over a year with Customs and Quarantine Agency to develop, which is expanding your authority, authority powers, so that you can move freely to inspect our ports, and secondly, to secure you a biosecurity division as is stated in Public Law 31-43, but it lacks support now of the Customs and Quarantine Agency head. So now that we have exhausted all items on the agenda, I would like to adjourn this public hearing. The committee will continue to accept written testimony for the next 10 working days. Testimonies may be sent via email to senator TC Nelson at GuamLegislature.org, or delivered to the Office of Senator, Tulina Cruz Nelson, at Suite 202 Alpha, 173 Espinal Avenue, Huguenya, Guam 96910. We will allow 10 working days, so please ensure that you submit to the committee the items that have been requested by my colleagues, and then also the breakdown of the unfunded mandates that the government of Guam has to fund through the Customs and Quarantine Agency, that is federal requirements. Thank you very much. It is now 17:01 in the afternoon. Have a good night, and God bless you.